Our mayor.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, excuse me, August 11th town, excuse, 2020 town meeting for the Town of Upper Marlboro. According to, whoops, my phone, it is 7:00. And before we take a roll call, because we really can't take the roll call with Ms. Duckett yet, not till next month. So I'd like to welcome our newly elected commissioner, Ms. Janice Duckett. And again, congratulations on your win last night. So if you, David, if you will, can you call the roll?
Yes, madam president. President Linda Penaier.
Present.
Commissioner Franklin.
Present.
Dave Williams, town clerk, present, and commissioner, newly elected Commissioner Janice Duckett, noted as present in the minutes tonight to take board seat on September 14th.
Welcome, Janice.
Okay, may we all stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
And to.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Do I have consent to the agenda?
I consent to the agenda.
Do I have approval of the election result for July, the July 27th, 2020 special election?
Okay, um, to enter into the per ordnance, we enter into the permanent record, the results of the July 27th special town election to fill a vacancy. This was prepared by the Board of Supervisors of Elections. And we hereby, I'm reading from the letter, we hereby serve the results of the 2020 special town election to fill a vacancy on the Board of Town Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro, conducted on July 27th, 2020 are as follows. Total number of voters, 68. Total number of absentee ballots was 28 issued, 26 were returned by the closing of the polling place. The total number of ballots cast was 94. And the results are as follows in alphabetical order. Brian A. Bontrager, 12, Janice Duckett, 37, Sarah Franklin, 45. And there were no write-in votes and no emergency voter authorizations. Signed, Yvonne Tucker, Chief Election Judge, Joseph Hurkley, Supervisors of Elections, and Ellen Story, Board of Supervisors of Elections. And now the, the board will need to vote or approve, excuse me, approve those results.
I motion that we approve the results of the July 27th special election.
I second. In, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I so noted.
Okay, can I get approval for the work session in town meeting minutes as stated on the agenda in the Finance and Treasurers Report?
Do we need to approve these each individually, or can we approve them as a clump?
We can approve them all together.
Okay. So I, I move that we approve the meeting minutes and financial reports from June 3rd, June 9th, June 23rd, July 14th, and the financial report for July 31st.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I so noted.
Okay. Okay, going ahead with department reports, first up is Chief Bruce with the Public Safety Report.
Good evening, everybody. For the month of July, we had one domestic call, we had two vandalism reports, a fraud report, one traffic complaint, and alleged armed person, that was four calls, but it was in two different locations. We had one property damage, four business alarms that went off, four disorderly reports, one animal complaint, two thefts, a domestic call, check on the welfare, two accidents in town, and a family dispute of five residents, and the attempted suicide, all within the town of Upper Marlboro. And over the month, again, we continuously have our PG Chiefs, our Maryland State Human calls about COVID-19, and our responses, law enforcement, and what we can do to help mitigate the spread. You know, we've done things here at the town hall as far as cleaning the buildings and things of that nature. Looking towards the county and other government agencies opening up in the near future and what that looks like, and how we as law enforcement can help in that effort, as well as how the businesses are responding and making sure that they're in compliance with the new ordinances that change, seem like every two weeks, and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do so that we're all safe here. Also throughout the month, we, myself, Sergeant Irving, Corporate Debarros, actually drove through the town during this stay-home order, talked to several residents about, you know, things that they've had concerns about, as well as, you know, making sure we cut down on some of the speeding that's going in town. We actually went over and talked to the Sheriff's Department, they've done a soft opening, they're supposed to do another one next month, and then the final one will probably be in October. Went over their building protocol, safety procedures, and how they're going to open up and how that affects the town with the things that are going on and around Main Street, Ward Street, and how traffic will flow as, you know, as normal things happen here in the town. I actually was on the CERT Zoom call this past month where the members there honored former Commissioner Wanda Leonard and talked about all the things that she had done at CERT and how she was an integral part of CERT and how, you know, she would be truly missed, as we all know. So we had an opportunity to spend about two hours going over that and talking and honoring her life. Obviously, we had two town elections, one last month, one this month, so I was here making sure that things were okay with the election. We also coordinated with the cleaning company for last month's cleaning, as well as yesterday's election cleaning. We had that done today, so that our building has been safe, so everybody can feel comfortable with that. And we actually had a rally in town last month where a group of individuals wanted to voice their concern and things of that nature in front of the county administration building, so myself, Corporate Debarros, and Code Officer Stewart, we actually provided road closures for them to be able to do that safely until the rain actually stopped that, but we basically were able to assist them with that and allow them to have their freedom to express whatever they wanted to express to the building in front of them. Last month, we had violations that went out for a variety of different issues. We had several, actually 94 parking tickets issued last month, and we've made several traffic stops for obviously speed. And I call it sign violations or individuals who were driving through certain streets and vehicles that they probably should not have been able to drive through, but due to some traffic issues downtown, it allowed them to go on streets that they probably wouldn't normally go on. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be willing to answer them. If not, that's it for me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing none. Thank you, chief. Next up, Public Works.
All right, good evening, everyone. Sorry for the, sorry for the delay. I'm having a lot of technical difficulty on every device that I own. All right, moving forward, for the month of July, capital improvements. I attended a virtual Maryland Municipal, Maryland Municipal League Public Works Association meeting where COVID-19 issues were the, were at the forefront of the discussion. Our efforts shared to town seem to coincide with what other municipalities of equal and or greater size are implementing within their jurisdictions. Maintenance and beautification. Urbicide treatments continued in town. As most of you know, this has continued to be a very slow process due to, due to the amount and the threat of rainy in each weekly forecast. Old Marlboro Pike, 725 from Church Street to the cleaners, town hall, and the Church Street parking lot lawn included in misrouted treatments. At town hall, an absentee ballot box was installed for the first instance of election. The generator received a once-over by crumple's power. Also at town hall, we are awaiting site visits from tree specialists to develop quotes for dead tree and lemon moon in preparation for the playground construction. The five pet waste stations we received, we received from the state of Maryland have been assembled, erected, and have begun, and we have begun data recording. This brings our total number of pet waste stations within the town to 16. Construction of the intersection upgrade at Main and Water Streets is moving along with the addition of the signal posts and now the completion of the stamped crosswalks. Multiple end dot service requests were entered for pending issues such as the sinkhole at Elm Street, which has been taken care of. This dislodged grate on Main Street, intersection inspection at Main and Water Streets, and a downed pedestrian crosswalk line at Elm Street. Weather-related activities, we had several events, one of which resulted in the flooding of the Water Street Bridge. And for refuse accumulations, both day accumulations for solid waste, things going to the landfill with 4.13 tons. And accumulations for yard waste, collections for the month of July with 3.2. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right, thank you very much.
I'd like to, I'd like to acknowledge you for putting the service request numbers in on the report, so it's very helpful for the record-keeping.
Oh, great. I will continue.
Thank you, Colonel. Next up, Will Morgan with the.
Evening, good evening, everyone. So as we've been talking about this, I think for a few months, the mayor has really wanted to make sure that the Treasury Report a little bit more. It's probably not what it's going to look like as you get forward towards the latter parts of the year. Speak to is more so, it's just the first month of the fiscal year. So there was, was not a lot that we can really add into in here as far as graphs and things like that, as we try to kind of beautify and uplift a little bit more our Treasury Report. But what we, we're speaking about today, our budget versus action report is a little bit more detailed, where we are, last year was very condensed, I would say, and we opened it up a little bit more so you could see our master or major line items within our budget. So today, or within the month of July, the parking meters that we have, of course, within the town, we've only been able to generate $4,900. As we know, the courts are still not fully operational or once, like they whole, as whole as they were before. So we're struggling in that area. We did get some money from some of those fines that, or from some fines that has been issued with parking fines and penalties, bought in about $584. We've had some, some monies come in for some seller property. As a lot of you know, we've purchased some police vehicles last fiscal year. In this fiscal year, we've been able to, you know, get rid of or auction off some of those salvage vehicles. So we have some money in our seller property, about $2,300 that was able to come in for that. We did receive some real estate tax money for the month of July, $32,000, $33,000. One thing that we're really, really going to monitor is the income taxes. For instance, in the month of July last year, we, we brought in $9,800. And for the month of July in FY 2021, we bought, we bought in $3,500. So that's something that's really going to impact this, the town's budget due to COVID-19. Again, we'll monitor it very, very closely. I believe last year, or last fiscal year, in the month of August, we brought in about $32,000. So I'm hoping that number is very similar, equal to, if not better than what we got last fiscal year. But right now, our projection is that it will not be, come in at $32,000 for the month of August. As far as our expenses, the town, we've been doing a lot with supplies, with COVID-related supplies. Currently, right now, we have spent a little bit over $6,500 for COVID expenses within this fiscal year. We, myself and Kyle and the administration has been working on the CARES Act money, reimbursement money that the county has received. So that's something that we're going to be looking to draw down soon, in a very near future. Excuse me, one moment. Looking at some other things, we've had some other, other things as such as using subscriptions that we pay for on an annual basis that has come out, that we're putting forth in the month of July. We've had our annual audit that we have paid for within the month of July as well, and some other basic utility expenses that we experienced on a month-to-month basis right now. As I mentioned, it's very tough because of COVID. We were in a negative or in a red for the month of July to start off this fiscal year with $44,000. And again, it's largely to COVID because we're, we usually see anywhere between $25,000 to $30,000 coming in from our parking revenue, and again, we only receive only about $4,600. So that's been a big hit to our budget thus far and probably will be for the next few months or Treasury Reports that we're able to report out. Again, like I mentioned, we're going to be monitoring EIT. And something that's not large in our budget, but brings in about $15,000 in our permits budget or line item, as things such as business, this license fee, conference room rentals, and little things like that, it adds up. But because of COVID, a lot of people are doing virtual, hence like we are right now. So we anticipate some of those permits or rental fees, we won't be seeing as, as far as revenue either. So again, it's going to be tough, it's going to be something, as far as our projections continue to go out, that we'll continue to monitor. But I know the mayor has been, wanted to be very transparent as far as what we want to have to do in the near future, just to make sure that the town still stays afloat and we're still able to offer, of course, the services necessary for the community. As I mentioned about COVID expenses thus far, us already spending about $6,500. My next thing now I just want to speak about is the FY 2020 audit. So myself and the auditors have been working on the audit since maybe late, late May, early June. We're progressing at a very good pace right now. I think I said this some time before, that we wanted to make sure that the audit was done before the deadline, which is October 31st. Right now, we're on schedule to do that. We believe that we're going to pass the documents or our trial balances over to the actual auditor by the end of the month, this month. So I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to do that, and I'm very hopeful that, and believe that we'll have the financial audits for FY 2020 completed by October 31st as well. And that's all I have to speak on, and if you have any questions available.
I, I have a question, this is Patty. I'm looking at the cash on hand, and I thought there was, maybe I'm wrong, there was like $700,000.
Not trial balance, no. It wasn't, not, not from the last, sorry, not from the last, not from the last Treasury Report. It was not that high. It might have been high 500s, I believe. Roughly about, little about over 70, $80,000 of monthly expenses that would occur. And again, we have not seen any money coming in on our parking meters, which we heavily lean on. So it's really taking a toll on our, our revenue coming in, of course. But no, it wasn't that high at the last Treasury Report.
Okay, so I'm looking at a negative of $44,000. 10 months from now, we'll, we'll have lost all the money that we have cash on hand in the banks. Can you tell me how much money, I know we have new parking, parking meters, but what was the, before we got the new parking meters, what was the income from the parking meters? And how, how much has COVID affected us because we're not getting the extra revenue that we had anticipated from the new parking meters? Do you have that information, or can you give me a guesstimate?
Yeah, so, so within the year of fiscal year 2019, the town, we, remember, we, our parking meters wasn't doing any, really anything for us because a lot of them were defective, and also we didn't have anyone enforcing the parking within the town. So I don't think that given a number from FY 19 is a really accurate number. We were only probably bringing in honestly, maybe $2,000 a month, if that, just because people were paying on some of the meters that were working. As I mentioned, when we, within this, the previous fiscal year, when we first got them installed in August, we probably brought in maybe about $15,000. And then as the, the months progressed or the year progressed, we started knowing that we can always potentially, or look forward to bringing in roughly minimum of $25,000. And again, it, that's a $20,000 difference in the first month right there. That creeps, as halfway creeps into obviously that difference or that red that we have of $44,000. And again, EIT plays an effect in some of the other things that we have brought in. But I don't believe that the reserve account will be exhausted by the end of the fiscal year. There's some other things that we're looking at to potentially put forth, of course, before we even get into reaching into our reserve accounts in full month.
That, that number in the reserve account looks really, really nasty. It's a very scary number, just saying. Thank you.
And also, Will, if I could hop in real quick, just on the parking meters. The next phase reopening of the courthouse, as, as you guys may know, the courthouse is going through reopening phases like all courthouses in the state. We're currently on phase three of the reopening plan, so as we've gone through the phases, our parking meter revenues have ticked up. The next big one, or the next phase is August 31st, and that's when they reopen in-court trials without jury. So that's criminal, minor traffic, red light parking. So we're expecting to see a decent uptick in parking meter revenues at that point. And then the courthouse fully reopens on October 5th, 2020. And so we'll hopefully be going back to pretty much, hopefully close to normal operations for the parking meters at that point. So I just wanted to throw that out there to everyone.
So, so understanding that the, that you're saying about $25,000 is what you're expecting come October-ish, that still leaves you $15,000 in the red. Where's the rest of that red coming from?
Well, the, the rest of the red can come from real estate taxes. This is the top, the beginning of the fiscal year, and we always get a good lump sum of money of real estate taxes and usually earned income taxes at the top of the year. Keep in mind that personal property taxes and also public utility taxes are big, big revenue gainer for, for the Town of Upper Marlboro, and we anticipate that that's probably going to bring in a little upwards of $300,000. We typically get that money in, in late September, early October. One thing that we are doing is reaching out to SDA, the State Department of Assessments and Taxations, to see if they can kind of fast-forward their assessments documentation tools so that we can get those out to those public utility companies early, so that we try and bring money in. So those are some of the things that we're trying to do. But yes, that's pretty much where, right now, where the remaining of revenues will be coming in. Outside of that, it's just more so cutting back on expenses that are more so not necessities right now.
All right, great. Thank you, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Will, I was just looking at that number and I was going.
You never put me on the spot, it's all right. This is what I'm here for, to try to answer some of the questions and clear up things.
Okay, thank you.
And just, Will, if I could just throw something in there too, we just today got the reimbursement forms for the CARES Act. They will be filling those out ASAP to start recouping some of that COVID money that we've spent. So just FYI.
So, Will, my, my question is, so we have this 44,61968. What it sounds like you're saying is that's this month, but we don't expect that level of difference to be happening every month going forward.
Um, and, and the reason I say that is because most people are going to pay their real estate taxes. I don't think they want their house to go up for sales and things like that. Everyone loses their house. So those are things that I think we can always expect from the homeowners within the Town of Upper Marlboro. Similar to the public utility taxes, our, we sent out roughly about 15 or 20 public utility bills. There's really only two that pay a large amount of that, and that's Pepco and Verizon. And they pay that instantly, they don't even wait, on our invoice, we say net 30, they don't even wait net 30, honestly. So no, I don't think that, this, this, I know this isn't going to continue for the, these months that's approaching. I think that for us, it's more so looking at once 20, the calendar year of 2021 comes, is COVID really still around and how much is affecting the business that's going on within the town? So in these early stages of the months, or of the fiscal year, I don't think it's going to, we're going to continue to see the, the, see the town in a red, but in the latter parts of this fiscal year, that is something that is a dark cloud for us.
So you're suggesting that we need to be frugal right now, but that we're not headed in some sort of loss of all our reserve income because we can reassess the budget again at the second, after the second quarter?
Yes, and that's something that we intended on doing, reassessing the budget mid-year anyway. Because again, I think we were, as we created this budget, I thought it was a pretty good budget that we put forth. Again, it was just the scare and the nervousness of some of the uncertainties of what money may or may not be coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, I do want everyone to keep in mind that this budget was drafted in May. And we worked on this budget in April and May. Nobody knew at that time, I didn't have a crystal ball, and no one on the board did either, as far as you. We forecasted based on what we knew, we, was done in the past. We did not know how long this would all last. Again, no one did. And we knew that we would be revisiting this budget and cutting back probably if it got bad bad. And we are looking at various ways, as we speak, to do that. I have a meeting with people on Friday to do just that. Cuts I don't necessarily think I'm going to like making, but we might have to do them. And we're going to take a look at every angle, and before we even touch the reserve, make sure we are as lean as we can be. Just so you know that. And with that, we will go on to the clerk's office. David, do you have any to report?
Sorry, Linda. Will you be making these cuts on Friday, or will we be discussing it at the work?
Oh, they're always going to be discussed, sorry.
Okay, just want to make sure, because I thought we should discuss it now if they, if you were doing it on Friday.
No, I, I mean, these are cuts that, yeah, I, before I take something to the board, I'm going to decide whether or not that's something that needs to go to the board.
So you're getting information for us on Friday. Thank you.
Okay, David?
Yes, um, okay, I'd like to report that the Human Resources Director, William Morgan, and I will be interviewing applicants for the deputy clerk position. Not exactly sure of that schedule yet, the dust is still settling on the election paperwork, but it should be very soon. We want to get that handled very soon. Um, I also wanted to, uh, say that now, once we've been, uh, reissuing parking tickets, um, there is a group of citations that are up for flagging. So that is also something that will happen. Uh, we'll catch up with that in the next, uh, in this rest of the week here. Um, and a note about the flagging, um, in light of COVID. Uh, by the number of flags that we have in the database, it's pretty evident that there's people trying to skate by with expired tags. Um, there is always a small percentage of expired flag citations that are from vehicles that have been salvaged and thus the flag doesn't exist anymore or is not applicable anymore. So, um, I suspect that this will kind of, uh, flagging payments should increase as time goes by. Uh, maybe things get more stable for people or they just realize that they can't afford not to have their car. And just a note on the treasures report, I, uh, my database shows, uh, about eleven fifty more in parking fines and penalties than this treasures report does for the month of July. I, I don't know. Uh, I didn't catch that. I apologize. I didn't catch that before when I received it. But I think, I think it's more than, than five eighty-four.
Dave, oh, what, was some of that cash or was it card as well? Because are you, are you clocking cash and card?
I'm looking at the, uh, database for the, the citation database. And when I run my report from July one to July thirty first, there was uh, seventeen hundred, well, one thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars, uh, taken in to pay for, fines from parking tickets and that, and, and flags.
Okay, Dave, so some of that could be bundled in the parking meter money. Uh, maybe it could have been a mishap with how it was read, but that, that's.
My database doesn't have any parking meter coins or payments. It doesn't reflect any of that. It just reflects the citations.
All right, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, as the reconciliation completes within a financial system, some of it may have read in my system as parking meter money. Cause the system is dictating whether twenty-five or thirty-five or seventy-dollar fee uh, should go to a parking fine or a parking meter money. So maybe some of that is reconciled into the improper account.
Okay, okay, thanks for explaining that.
So one of, and, and one of the things that, that we've spoken about over the last few months, things like that, were, was about how the, the, the meeting in the treasury reports has, has to be reported in a short period of time. So sometimes monies can be allocated into the improper account through QuickBooks. And then what we do is after we, you have to go back and re-reconcile accounts and make sure the trial balance is accurate. Um, and you'll usually see things like that or readjustments of accounts, uh, in the next Treasury report.
Okay, all right, thanks, Will. And that's all I have to report.
Would you like the historical committee to do a report? We, we will have our quarterly, uh, virtual quarterly on August fifteenth. That's Saturday at ten o'clock.
I'm sorry, I was muted.
That's okay. I knew what that was going.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Anyway, um, and Brian, what was going on with Ms. Bookwater? Are you, are you?
Yeah, Ms. Sharon Book Walter sent us some neat info about the, um, Spanish flu back in nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen, noting that a good number of people in and around town had passed away in that era. That there are gravestones in the cemeteries with the respective churches from nineteen eighteen and nineteen nineteen. But the good point that we found from the article was that they opened up or they closed down, um, everything for only about three weeks in the fall of nineteen eight, nineteen eighteen, and then opened back up, which ended up being a horrible mistake because it continued to the summer of nineteen nineteen. But we'll see how things play out with how things are opening and how careful we are these days with this current situation.
Let's not have history repeat itself.
That's never good.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, is, uh, do, can we get a report from the events committee?
Yes, I'm here. Can you all hear me?
Thank you, Jeremy.
Hi, um, first I wanted to say congratulations to Sarah and Janice. Um, I've obviously worked with Sarah before, so I look forward to doing that. And I, I look forward to working with Janice too, with the events committee. Um, we last met last Thursday, August sixth. Um, this Saturday, this last Saturday on August eighth, we did have the shred event from nine AM to noon. Um, and that was in the Board of Education parking lot. And I believe by our count, we had a hundred and two vehicles show up for that. So that was a, a really nice turnout. Um, we do have the blood drive scheduled at the community center for Friday, September fourth. I mean, it's from twelve to six. Um, Kyle may correct me here. I think there are thirty-six slots and I think they all may be full. Um, but he would know that better than I do, but I believe they all, all of the donation spots are full right now. Um, so we were looking at, um, in our last meeting, we were looking at our plans throughout the year. And, you know, we've had these two small events, um, or the shred event, and we have the blood drive, which are really, you know, more adult events. And we've had to cancel Marlboro Day and, um, we had to cancel our summer outdoor movie plans. So we don't, we do feel like, you know, we would like to have an event that's for families and for children. Um, that's why we still believe we think we can pull off the trunk or treat that we have scheduled currently for Saturday, October thirty first. Um, most likely it would not be the traditional trunk or treat that we've had in the past. Um, we've been looking at alternatives. And we've sort of settled on an idea toward, um, a town trick or treat drive-through-like event, um, which we believe we can pull off with the restrictions, uh, with a minimal budget and with social distancing. Um, we talked about if we want to have it on Main Street or actually the, we thought the layout for the shred event on Saturday worked really well and something like that is worth being considered. We're looking at probably a driving route where people can drive through and hand out treats. Um, no one would be getting out of their cars. Um, we could always ask volunteers to decorate tables instead of cars as they did in the past. And, um, for this, it would actually be a fairly low cost. The town has speakers that provide music and we have leftover prizes and decorations from past, um, trunk or treats. So the primary expense would be candy and we intend to ask for corporate and private candy donations there to offset costs. Um, again, these plans are preliminary, so we're always open to suggestions. Um, again, most likely the holiday party will have to be revised, um, due if, if situations remain now as they, um, then as they are now. So our current thought is possibly doing an outdoor tree lighting, um, and or decorating event in the town hall, um, which we could combine with the toy drive as we have every year. For free entertainment, we were thinking about finally taking Patty up on her caroling, if she still wants to do that.
Yay! Oh, Lord, help us.
Patty, no one wants to hear me sing.
So again, this would be a really low-cost event. Um, because normally the main cost of the trunk or treat event is the, I'm sorry, the, um, holiday party event is the catering, which we obviously would not have this year. Um, we do want to mention that we know funds are very tight right now and events can seem like an extraneous thing. But we do think, you know, we've been very conscious with how we've done and we've come in under budget in all of our events over two years. Um, we do think the events are important. Um, our original goal was to continue to build the sense of community that we have and grow the community together. And we think these are a couple of events that they could be a low cost, but they could also be high-impact events. Um, we're also looking more and more about adding local and corporate sponsors to offset any town costs, which are already going to be much lower this year. Um, that's all I have. We're open to suggestions. Um, you can reach my email or we always have our meeting on the first Thursday of each month.
I just want to add something to Jeremy's presentation because we know that I am on the Town Events Committee. Um, and I also do the secretary and the budget for that. So we are looking to transition me out of at least the treasurer secretary role. And we're working on that and getting someone else who can take that. Hopefully someone else can take my role on the board as well. But if they can't, I don't want to leave events, but no, without a full board. Just want to disclose that to everyone.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Um, Jeremy, if you get stuck, and I hate putting myself out there, but if you guys get stuck finding a second board member, I will step up. I will not be as active as Sarah, but I will be there since I'm already there for the historical committee anyway, so.
No, and we, and we appreciate that. And we've got, and we've got a good group of volunteers that are consistently coming to every event who don't, who are very happy being volunteers. Um, they don't necessarily want to step up into a, a board role. Um, but they, they, they come to every event. They do a great job. So, you know, that's a, that's a really generous offer and we appreciate that. Um, hopefully, you know, it won't be necessary, but, um, if it is, then thank you again. But I think, I think, I think we'll be okay. Yeah, yeah, I, I think we'll be okay.
And there's actually three of us, but, um, the third person, Sharna, is, she has to work late on Tuesday nights, so she's never able to attend these meetings.
I, I, I hear that Rusty Penoyer really doesn't have a lot of stuff to do at night. So, you know, maybe on a Thursday night, you could get an extra board member. He comes in as our extra quorum when we need one.
Patty, there is someone driving to your house as we speak and you may want to move away from the window.
Um, I think one of our people will, um, easily take over the treasury role and someone else can step into my voting role, even if I still just take notes to type up later. So we'll, we'll easily do that, I think.
Any questions or?
Okay, are we, everything okay now? Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Uh, Sustainable Communities Report. Uh, Evelyn is not feeling well. She texted me earlier, so she will not be here this evening. So we will, uh, forego that for this month. Is anyone here from the cert team? I didn't see anyone.
Well, I guess I can speak on that. Um, like I said, we did, they, they did the meeting last month, um, in honor of Commissioner Leonard, former Commissioner Leonard. And they actually participated in the shredded event, uh, on this past Saturday. So, um, they're trying to regroup and figure out how they're moving forward from here. Um, so that's about it for right now.
Okay, uh, thank you. And I just checked. I didn't see anyone from the volunteer fire department. Kyle, did anybody give a report or anything? Okay, then moving on, we will talk to our friends from Greenwell.
Yes, hello.
Hi, Jacob. How you doing?
Good, how are you? So first off, congratulations to the new members of the board. It feels like we were just doing an update in May and now we're in, we're in August slouching toward the end of summer somehow, which is bizarre. Uh, but this is sort of an exciting time of the year for us because lawmakers are starting to move around more. They're starting to call and text with, uh, with us a little bit more. And we're getting a feel for some of the, uh, more large-ticket legislation that they're going to be introducing come next session. Uh, and as, you know, we move into fall, which, again, it almost, it feels strange to be talking about fall, but, you know, we're going to see some prefiled bills and we will, of course, you know, keep an eye on anything that affects the people of the town, um, or the municipality as an entity. Uh, so twenty twenty-one, we're going to start, uh, we're going to see some sort of police reform package come from leadership. T and I have been attending committee hearings, some of the more prominent ones being the Work Group to Address Police Reform and Accountability and the Commission to Restore Trust in Policing. So last week, the commission met under, um, under the guide of former federal judge Alexander Williams, Jr., to discuss the preparedness of police departments to deal with changes across the state, uh, using Baltimore City as an, uh, as an example. Then the following Thursday, about a hundred members of the public actually testified in front of the Police Reform Work Group, sharing with members of the House some, uh, very emotional and sometimes traumatic stories of, uh, brushes with law enforcement, and with others urging the Law Enforcement Bill of Rights to be repealed even. So, you know, obviously the topic is hot. There's a lot of passion and there's traction for action from local, state, and national bodies. And we're going to see a lot more of this in the months to come. Uh, from the committee side of things, that's, that's about all we've seen. The Joint COVID nineteen Response Work Group will hold their August meeting tomorrow at, uh, ten AM. And of course, you know, we'll, we'll send over notes from that afterwards. Uh, but that's, that's all we really have to report for now. And barring any questions, it's been great to see everyone. And we will report back in September.
Does anyone have any questions for Jacob? Or anything? Jacob, thank you very much. You always keep us so well informed. I don't know how you do it. I, I just try to keep track of local in its heart.
No problem. It's, it's, it's great to talk to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we will go through our commissioner reports. And the first up, we will ask Commissioner Elect Janice Duckett, do you have anything you would like to come in on?
Um, not at this time, um, but I do want to say thank you, um, to those maybe residents that are listening and, um, that supported me. I really want to thank them. Um, and I really look forward to working with, um, uh, the, the town, um, to help move us forward. So I see that we have a, a lot of things on our plates and, um, a very interesting fall coming up in the twenty twenty-one. So, um, I'm just looking forward to seeing what I can do to help aid the town and work together with you all to, um, move us forward successfully. So, thank you, and I just look forward to being on board.
Thank you. Once again, congratulations. And I am also very happy to see you onboard and look forward to working together with you and with Sarah.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations on finally getting a quorum.
That was, our doing that was the public's doing, voting. So yes, I'm very glad to at least have a, a real meeting. Next up would be Commissioner Sarah Franklin.
Uh, I just have two main things. Um, I've talked to some of the residents and they had a few concerns about the voting. Um, they just felt like the absentee voting was a process and we're wondering if we could think about how to streamline that. And then I also heard, and I'm sure this has been said before, but that, that the hours without having like earlier in the day hours was maybe a challenge for some people to get here. So just something for us to think about going forward. The other thing I was hoping that our town could look at doing this school year is finding a way that our community could help support our students and parents who are going through this really challenging distance learning time. So I'm working with the local schools and I'm going to start contacting the PTAs to see if we can set up some kind of community meeting to discuss how maybe community volunteers can help, uh, families get through this time.
Okay, uh, as soon as you have something, you know, that you can put together and bring, you know, before the board, we'll bring it to a work session and, and the, uh, we can look, hash it out. And if we at all possibly, I'm, I'm sure we would love to be in that position to help. Everybody knows school-aged children are handful in the first place. And, and under these continued at-home situations. I'm glad my phone.
It's can be, I, you know, parents are trying to work from home or away from home and help their kids. And I thought we. And I thought we probably have some community members who might be able to zoom in and help them with their math or something.
Oh, I'm sure we do. And like I said, God bless you because I'm glad mine are grown. Do that. Although we do still help with math.
You're asking old folks to do new math.
Well, I didn't mean math specifically, and it doesn't have to be old folks.
And who you calling old?
I didn't learn the new math. So you're going to have to find somebody that knows the new math, and I think they're all still learning it.
Yeah, math is interesting now. But I think it's a thought and a way to start building community to try and see how we can build some of those relationships, even though we're not able to get together and provide support. So hoping we can make that work.
The best thing we can do is try. And if we get the right things going in the right directions, we can always get it done. So, thank you, Sarah. And as far as my report, I want to thank everyone who came out to vote in both these last elections. I was very happy to see how we get voter participation. Everybody thinks, well, 86, 96 people. For this town, that's a lot. And to do it not just once, but twice in two weeks, I am amazed. And I'm very proud of our people. We take voting seriously here, and I'm very glad we do. And ironically, we had, I believe, the same number of walk-in people this time as we had the first election. And the only place we fell was on the absentee ballot. Part of that problem that we saw, Sarah, was because we did them so close. And I think that was part of the problem. But we will look at it, and I will talk with the Board of Elections and see if we can't hopefully not have to do it again too soon. Three this year was enough. So.
We have to vote in November, so we're going to be the votingest town.
That November election is... It's in November, I'm not ready to deal with it. I have just, we need to get some things finalized first, like getting Commissioner-elect become Commissioner Janice Duckett, which puts us at a full Board. Okay, moving on, our business agenda. I would like Kyle to take over at this point and give us an update on the playground project. Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. We have with us Justin Wilson from Sparks and Play. Sparks and Play is the contractor the Board selected to do the playground for the Upper Marlboro Borough Community Playground right next door. And I see Justin just went live. We have a little presentation. And this is, so everything's in play. I just want to remind everyone that we can't make any changes at this point. This is just an update on what the playground's going to look like, timeline, and future phases. So I'll pass it over to Justin. Thanks for joining us, Justin.
Thank you, Kyle, and good evening, everybody. Congratulations, Janice and Sarah. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to work together. As Kyle said, we are working on the playground, which is going to be happening right next to the building that Kyle is sitting in right now, I believe. And the first little portion here, I wanted to give an update as to where we've come from, and then talk about where we are and where we're going. A lot of you probably already know most of this information, but I'm going to repeat it just for those who don't. Kyle and I met several months ago and talked about space that's located right along Old Crane Highway, and how can we make that into a play space for the Upper Marlboro, the town of Upper Marlboro. We did some conceptual designs, which is shown here. And then after doing some refinement, which is on the next slide, we identified some of the ways in which this space can expand and become something more than just a small playground. And so we had talked about connections back to Sasserfields and possibly putting in a splash pad, an additional parking, things like that. And as we continue to go through the process, the next page shows kind of where we ended up. We identified that there might be a potential future building that's happening on the one side, and also additional parking. And so we felt like we needed to move the playground a little bit further away from the building, which is kind of what we show there in purple and orange, the current location of the playground. And this is still all kind of conceptual. The next slide shows as we started to put things into plan, what it might look like. And this is a top view, and I realize there's a lot of lines going on there. On the left-hand side, we wanted to have a five to 12 play space. And on the right-hand side is a two to five play space. And then we have a seating area with some shade over it, up at the top of that kind of kidney bean there. And Kyle, you can go to the next one. This is an initial concept showing what it would look like. We had landed on the train station and the train based on the historical context of the space, looking at some historical maps, talking to the Historical Committees. We felt like this was something, that the train station was something that people can relate to quickly, but it also can help tell a story about the town and some of the developments happening in the town. Something we always strive to do is make sure that there's education, there's learning that's happening. And so if a kid isn't too super enthusiastic about climbing around crazy, there's still things for them to do and things for them to read or interact with their parents or caregivers. And so that's where that educational component comes into. Working with Kyle, we determined that this needed to happen in two different phases. And on the next slide there, we start to identify what the first phase is. This is currently what we have going into production. This is the Chesapeake Beach Railroad Marlboro Station. It's an interpretation, and it also contains several historical pieces that we'll get into. But the intent, obviously, is to create a place for the kids to play, and then also have some sort of historical nod back to what used to be in the space. So you can see he called out here a few different things that are main elements. We have a hogshead climber, which we'll talk a little bit more about that, a wagon wheel climber in the front for some socio-dramatic play. We have places where kids can buy and sell train tickets. And then on the far right-hand side, there's an educational bulletin board, which you might see in an old train station. And there's a telescope, too, where someone can get up to the top and look through the telescope, kind of look down Crane Highway, and almost imagine they're waiting for the train to come up the way. On the next slide, we take a look at the back and the side. You can see a little bit closer to the educational bulletin board. We have something called the Wiggle Ladder, which is a more challenging climber for those who have lots of energy and like the thrill of a little bit more risk. And then we have a slide one, because every kid likes to climb up and then also slide down. And you see in the back, we have the benches and the shade canopy, a couple of spots that are ADA compliant, where someone can sit and watch their kids or grandkids, or the kids can take a break on hot days like we had today. Another rendering here on the next page shows us turning to the back. This is inside the train station. You can see we have an ADA transfer station on the right-hand side. That makes this entire play space ADA compliant. We have a Seek and Find panel, which we'll get a close-up of that. But this is a panel where an adult or a pair of kids can look at the object on that panel and then go around the playground and see if they can't find it, almost like a treasure hunt. We have the other side of the storefront ticket window, the slide. And then the corkscrew climber, which it's fun to climb up, but also kids can kind of spiral around as they go down. If we jump to the next slide, we get into some of the custom components. And when we did the original concept, we knew that there's going to be, there needs to be some sort of strong historical tie. And so we met with the Historical Committee. We learned from them, we proposed some ideas, and they gave us some feedback. And a couple of things that we thought were really cool that we could add to this would be a hogshead climber. And the hogshead was used historically, they would pack it full of tobacco leaves, and they would roll it down streets in order to get to the wharf. And so this climber is to resemble almost a quarter of a hogshead. They were giant barrels. And then we also have the wagon wheel climber, which gives a nod to some of the wagons and the expansion that was happening. The next slide, Kyle, we start to take a look at some of the custom graphics. So this image that you see here on the left is an image that was given by the Historical Committee, and then also the explanation was provided by them. It tells a little bit more about what a hogshead was and how people would use it, and also how Upper Marlboro related to this industry that was happening. And then on the right-hand side there, you see the Seek and Find panel. Again, object that you can find around the playground. We have a whistle, a train station schedule, which we'll get another peek at, images of a hogshead, some tickets. And then you can also see the image of how they used to compress the hogs. Go ahead to the next one there, Kyle. This is the front, so as a kid approaches it, there's a place for them to buy tickets. And then also off the left-hand side, you can see the historic train schedule. And that was shared to us from the Historic Committee. Somehow, they had had this image of it. And it was longer, but we decided to condense it to only the first few train rides of the day. It would be printed, and then it would be attached directly onto that panel. And the printing would take place on an aluminum sheet, so it's highly vandal resistant, and it's not like someone can tear it off. It's not paper or sticker or anything. Then right below that is a working bell, which the little flipper on the left-hand side, as a kid flips it, it'll ding the bell, almost like you're asking someone to come to the ticket window for you. And then the right-hand side there, the educational bulletin board. I don't expect kids to come and read this all the time. It's one of those things where they'll look at the pictures, they'll enjoy it. The adults can look at it and then summarize it or share it with the kids that are there. But every once in a while, you do have kids that are highly interested in the historical piece. They will read it, and they'll absorb it, and they'll tell their parents. And their parents will wonder how they learned all this information about a railroad station that existed several years ago. But it contains some historical photos, one of the actual train station as it existed before it burnt down. And then also has a few snippets of kind of highlights of when it was opened, when the first train left, when the last train arrived, and then when the fire happened, I believe is, yeah, the last little note there. Kyle, if you go to the next one, give an overview of where we are. So we started with the site evaluation and the kickoff. That's Kyle and myself and others meeting on-site, looking at it to determine where the best place is. Did some conceptual master plans, which you saw at the very beginning. And then we had to look at the budget and see what it would come to. We talked with the historians and asked what they thought, and started to implement some of that. And then we needed to select between the train and the train station, what was the first phase. And then we worked on getting the graphics together so that Kyle could submit those for the grant that was received, which we're paying for this playground. We then finalized the playground design. We hired a civil engineering firm to come out and do a site survey and to provide grades. And then also, they put together construction documents so that we can submit for permits. The permitting process began about three weeks ago. We anticipate that it'll take about six weeks. Our expediter, our permit expediter, did say that with COVID, no. But he's been good about communicating. And if we find things get stuck anywhere, Kyle has told me that he can help push on some people to get it going a bit quicker. And the next step we're working on right now is getting fabrication done. We sent the final package to Kyle for review. And once that is signed, we send it to the manufacturer, and they start welding the pieces together and making the graphics and creating all the panels. Once that's done, then we're going to install it on the site. And that'll take about four weeks. The surfacing that you saw, which is going to be unitary rubber surfacing, that surfacing takes about a week to install. It'll have graphics in it, one graphic showing kind of a basic footprint of the train station, one set of graphics showing a railroad train track, and then one showing a pathway crossing it. The intention is that when Phase Two comes in, we would extend the train track underneath the Phase Two train, and then also add a few more graphics to help with the theming playground. The whole intention here is to finish up for a grand opening before November 30th, which is completely doable, and we're right on track to get that done. Kyle, if you want to show them the next couple of slides, this is what we're anticipating for Phase Two. I've been working with Kyle to get graphics and to get other types of documents together so that he can submit it for a Phase Two round of grant funding as well. And then last slide, I believe, is just a view from the other side. This piece is geared more towards your two- to five-year-old kids. So you'll notice that the maximum deck height is only about 48 inches. And then it also has a lot more kind of thematic stuff to it where kids can interact with each other and pretend that they're driving the train. For that age group, younger kids are going to be playing more with socio-dramatic play and pretend play. And then once they start getting a little more energetic, they'll move over to the five to 12 playground and be climbing and sliding and things like that. That is where we are with the process of the playground. We're looking forward to breaking ground within the next month or so and getting everything in the ground and ready for a grand opening, where hopefully that we can cut a ribbon together six feet apart. That's what it has to be.
All right, and we can take any questions at the time. If anyone has any questions or updates we can provide.
Thank you, Justin, that was awesome. The only thing I wanted to add is I know at some point in time we had talked about a time capsule. Were you aware of that requirement? Or is that a possibility to include?
So, yeah, when we had talked about the time capsule, I think with Kyle, we talked about it being in a different location. So at slide number three, I believe it was, it showed the playground, and it showed different lines and different locations where things could happen. Yeah, so A, we have their location A. And the original thought, as I understood it, was that there would be kind of the central gathering node underneath the trees, where people can sit, more signage and information about the history, but then also buried underneath that or in the vicinity, wherever it's decided, a time capsule that would capture a lot of that information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So that's not necessarily part of the playground right now.
Gotcha, thank you so much.
Yeah, and thank you for all your historical help.
So is there another phase where we actually get ships and stuff now?
That would be great. In fact, if you decide to do a... We have great custom artists. One is doing a historic ship for the eastern shore for a splash pad, the William B. Tennyson. They're recreating the William B. Tennyson and turning that into a splash pad, if everything goes through.
Looking forward to watching this come together.
Yeah, me too, Patty.
This is Janice, I have a question. I was wondering, so it sounds like this has already been decided, it's ready to go. I don't, you know, from... I mean, I just wanted to get the community at least have any input in the plans to be able to give some feedback, to know what they would like to see. I mean, these plans are nice, trust me, they're really nice. But of course, I'm not the only one that would probably be, you know, taking advantage of this space and using it there. You know, you have the whole community. So I was just wondering, did they have an input in the different things that would be put on the playground? I don't even see like a swing, which is just, you know, the old-fashioned thing that people normally like to see.
I can adjust that. So it did go out in the Landings Newsletter a couple of months ago. It was our centerfold article. And it had a portion of it, if anyone had any concerns or comments, they could reach out to the town. We honestly didn't get any feedback from that. And then it had been posted on social media a few times, website, and then it was discussed a couple of times in meetings. But we never got any specific feedback on what they would like to see other than, yes, a playground would be great, if that helps answer.
Did that happen before COVID started, like March 13th, before things shut down?
Yes, it did. We've actually, this project's been going on for, oh gosh, possibly going on two years now?
Yeah, from our first...
I think so, yeah, because we had to put in for the grant first, and then the grant was approved. So the conversation's been up. But it, so I think the Landings article did go out during COVID. That was probably the most mass get-out-there way that was delivered to every door. But social media, website, the meetings happened before COVID as well.
Yeah. Thank you. I just think it would be good to really be able to. I mean, at this point, we're so far along, it looks like in the process, there's no opportunity for that. But I think something... But I think something like this that really affects the community would be, it would be important for us to really, really push that because, you know, they have, you know, they want to, of course, when they see things, want to make sure that everybody has a buy-in. And so, you know, I think it would just be something good that we really pay attention to moving forward, to just really press it. Because there's so many people in this community with children and they're going to like to see something like this. But also to make sure that it works for them, you know?
Right, right.
So, but I appreciate.
And this is just Phase One of a larger project, the whole park itself. So this is just the playground, as you can see on the diagram. We have Phase Two coming in, we could do a splash park. And we, we're also hoping to expand some stuff out to Sasserfields as well in the future. So we're seeing this kind of as like the first step to an entire recreation opportunity for, and this is obviously just for kids. And that's something we can definitely discuss more, once everyone gets on board, is kind of what we can do at Sasserfield as well for all age groups and different outreach as well. I'm always big on trying to get the word out there and get feedback. So I'm completely behind you on that.
Yeah, thank you, but thank you for all this work. I mean, it really looks good, so.
I think Miss Duckett just added herself as the reach out, the outreach for the community.
I can do all of that more.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I think that it would be a good idea for us to have like meetings where the commissioners go and set up a tent in the different communities, whether, you know, in times when the weather is appropriate. And we can bring sort of a layout of projects like this so we can try to engage people where they're at to get more input than we did get.
Right.
I don't know what you think about that going forward, but.
Definitely. So as Kyle said, Phase One is kind of locked in. We've gone through the process, different design options, different reviews. But it's not uncommon for us to work very closely with leadership that does engagement. So for instance, at schools, we will often sit down with the PTO, the students, the principal, and then also the occupational or behavioral therapists and get ideas from them where they want to go. When we showed Phase Two, that's kind of what we had had originally thought. But I totally agree, the community needs something that works for them and that they're excited about. And so there are things that, if this is something that you want to take on, I can help share with you to get the feedback from the community. I know it's difficult right now to do live workshops and stuff like that. So I, I'm here to help however we can. So I want to make sure that this, not only does it give a historic nod to what existed there before, but that is something that the community comes to and it meets all their needs.
I have some ideas too on how to socially distance, get some involvement when we get there.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you very much, Justin. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Wilson? Or any comments? I look forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Me too. Thank you so much for letting me join.
Yeah, two, over two years?
Yep.
I'd like to say that's beautiful. I think you've done a wonderful job, along with the Historical Committee and our town administrator. I just want to put out there that 13 years ago, over 13 years ago, when I started working here, the then board was trying to get a playground in the area. And under whatever particular circumstances there were, there was not a lot of support from the community. But as soon as the, a member of the Chesapeake Beach Railroad Society came into the office one day and started pointing out that that's actually the location for the train, that's, that was the German seed for this project. So it's actually been more than two years, it's closer to 14. What a wonderful job. It's a great vision come to life.
Thank you.
My kids are looking forward to it.
Okay, Kyle, can you take us through our projects and updates?
Absolutely. So we got some headway on a couple of projects moving so far. Heritage area, I know they, the Heritage Area consultant came out and was toured around by the Historical Committee. They're just going around for the overall expansion project for the historic, for the Heritage Area. New playground we just talked about, a town asset inventory, it looks like that's going to come into play. Probably closer toward the end of the audit, we can refocus in on that. We still haven't heard anything back from Pepco regarding the charging, vehicle charging stations. The contact for that has changed, so I'm going to reach out to them once they get settled in again. We still have the outstanding mural application and grant process for the Arts Committee. This was one of the things that came up right before COVID. They did extend the grant, so we do have some time, but hopefully that can work. And with the board and volunteers to get the Arts Council up and standing, that's really the next step for the mural project. Downtown Streetscape Grant, we're waiting for State Highway to get back with the right-of-way application. And then that's something else that I have to bring before the new board to go over and get final approvals or any changes and whatnot on what they want to see downtown. And that's the $100,000 grant from the county for Streetscape in downtown Upper Marlboro. Right now, we have that pegged for like benches and new trash cans and bike locking stations and whatnot. And anything else that, that the board wants to see happen down there. Census 2020 is still underway. If you haven't filled out your census, please do that. The solar proposal, like the playground, is tied up with the permitting process. It's the solar panels for Town Hall that's grant-funded through the Maryland Energy Administration. So once they get the permits, it's about a two to three-day construction turnaround time. So we're just waiting on the okay for the permits for that. Petway Station, I can finally take this off the list. They were installed. We have some signage to go up. We have a banner, I'm going to be working with Mr. Bond to put this banner that they gave us up next to one of the high visible pet stations. But we do, are at the total of 16. Annexation-wise, we have generated the interest letters and they're being printed. And those are just the interest letters to go to the properties around people who have already requested to be annexed into the town limits, just to give them a heads up and if they have any questions. And we have built a part on the town website. If you go to the town website, right there in the center is annexation information. And I foresee this is a, this is a big project. I'm going to be working with the board and bringing the new commissioners up to speed on and working on that project. So if anyone has any questions on that, please feel free to let me know. And we also have some sustainable policies and working on a sustained, town sustainable website. So as you may know, we joined the Sustainable Maryland program. And with that is standing up a Green Team, another volunteer committee that we've got started right before COVID. And we just need to get them back underway. We're hoping to set up a Zoom conference call with them, that's a Sustainable Maryland Coordinator, who can kind of walk them through the Green Team process, what it is, what the next steps are. And part of that is he sent a bunch of sustainable policies, like green purchasing, minority purchasing and whatnot, for the board to consider and look over. So I have those drafts, so as we get settled in and moving in, that's, that's an easy thing to tackle. And just also moving on, I just added some pictures for what happened over the months. As you can see, we had some flooding issues on 7/25 at John Rogers. That is becoming a flash flood zone. It has flash flooded three times in the past 30 days and has required a water rescue at each one of these floodings. So that was July 6th, August 4th, and August 7th. The waters quickly swept in, people were waiting at the light and were trapped in their cars and fire and police had to come rescue them. So we are actively working with State Highway. We have requested that as an immediate response, they install flash flood warning signs in that area. And we closely monitor it during the flood. We came up in one instance because the code officer and chief were checking it for, as part of our routine checks during heavy rain. We check it on a very routine basis and we had gotten there just after it flooded. And so we're trying to work with State Highway to figure out a cause. It does not seem that the bridge is what's flooding. It seems the water is rising over the banks on the, to the left there of the fire truck. It comes over the bank through that vacant lot on the other side of the outside of town and floods the low part. As you can see, the bridge is not flooded, it's that low part between the bridge and John Rogers. So that's a hot point and a dangerous point that we're working on right now. Picture of the shredded event, as you can see, the intersection, main and water is moving forward. They installed the stamped brick, which is asphalt, so they grind down the roadway a couple of inches. They installed new colored asphalt that matched our bricks already downtown and put a stencil in place. So that's looking really good. And the blood drive only has one opening. And they're hoping, the Red Cross has asked us and the Upper Marlboro Community Center if we could hold those on a more monthly or bi-monthly basis. There's a lot of their donation sites they had to close because there's not enough space. But Park and Planning seems very willing to partner with us and the Red Cross to do these critical blood drives on a routine basis. So that's just another event that we can get out and get there going. That's all I have. I can answer any questions anyone has anytime. And residents and commissioners can always reach out to me at any time regarding any projects.
Thank you, Kyle.
Questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, so pallets?
Oh, the pallets. Yeah, so we reached out to the state again inspector and they hit, they slapped Washington, WSSE's wrist again to come out and fix it. As the flooding continues to see, continues to see a pallet or two every flooding event at Water Street coming down. But that's still an open case. I just reached out to them the other week and they sent out a thing. I can, I'll definitely follow up. I hadn't followed up since their initial email and their response to my email a couple of weeks ago. So let me shoot up to that.
So Brian and I are going to, if it doesn't rain early enough, we actually are going to try to get on the canoe this weekend.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, if you can scout that out, let me know if there's any pallets left. And geotagged pictures work perfectly because the WSSE contractors can't argue against pictures, so.
And the other question is, of course, the status of the stone building in OMS.
Absolutely. So the stone building is, we're, we're setting up a meeting with Greenwell in the near future and bringing the new commissioners on board with that about their strategies for this upcoming year. And that's, the old stone building is obviously a big one for the, and that, so we're just waiting for the stone building to be put on a surplus list and given to us. The Old Marlboro Elementary School, we have a hearing on September 11th. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
And that, we're going to be posting that information if people want to join in. That's the legal battle underway between Town of Upper Marlboro versus Prince George County regarding the de-designation of that. And so that's a virtual on September 11th. And those are the next steps.
I will have Kevin at the September meeting, which is after, because we're pushing that to the 14th. And he will come and give us an update on, in the September meeting. It will be after he does the oral arguments and we can go forward from there. Any other questions? Any other comments?
Public?
That's what it says, Patty. I was waiting for it to pop up. One, and I spoke to you about it, but I'd like to bring it before everyone. I think we need, we have a need for public restrooms someplace. I've had people going to the bathroom, I'm going to say dumping in my front yard and also over at the town parking lot. I think that is horrible and we need something. And if there is a restroom available, then maybe we should just at least post signs because I believe that's a health hazard. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was on the parking lot off of Water Street in that building across from Judge's Drive, there is a van that has dead tags and I didn't know if anybody has done anything about it or knew about it, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Patty, you're talking about the like kind of strip of different offices right before you get to the.
Yeah.
Lawyer's Row.
Lawyers Row, but behind Lawyer's Row, there is a, that yellow Realtor's office, or I guess it's a lawyer's office. And in his parking lot, all the way to the back, there is a van that has been sitting there for many, many months with expired tags on it.
I was just trying to mentally map it, so thank you.
Okay, I believe that is private property. And since it's private property, he has the right to leave the van there, even though it has expired tags on it. If the vehicle's reported stolen or if it was stolen, we could do something about it. But by being on private property, we can't just go on private property and take somebody's vehicle, just so you know.
That is a parking lot and I, I thought you had to cover up any expired tags, that they shouldn't have been visible. That's just.
Yeah, that's correct, Patty. On both commerce, in the town, per town ordinance, any commercial or residential properties, you're not supposed to have untagged, unlicensed, undrivable vehicles parked at a time. So that could be a code issue that we look into and getting that resolved.
Thank you. I still want somebody to at least consider putting up signs for where we, where people can go to the bathroom because it, sitting on my porch and where I see and what I see, it's, it's ugly.
Well, did you call the police or call somebody in reference to it?
Okay, so they pull into the parking lot, the town parking lot, they drive all the way down to the corner, they do their business and they leave. I'm pretty sure by the time I dial 911, they're gone. The person that was actually squatting on our property, we scared off because we walked up, walked up on them and scared them. But that's only when we're there.
Again, we still need you all to call. All residents need to understand that if you call 911, that is documented. And so if you give a description of the individual or individuals, if the police respond and see that individual, they could stop them, get their information and follow up. If you want to remain anonymous, you can, but you have to call. I've said that for over a year now to everybody. You have to call so that we can get this stuff documented, which would actually go on the monthly report that we have. But if people don't call, we don't know about it. And it's, you know, can't do much about something we don't know about, especially if it's several days or months later.
So you're telling me that if a car pulls in and I happen to see it going to the very back end?
Yes, call 911, yes.
Really?
Non-emergency number.
Call the non-emergency number, Patty.
Okay, non-emergency number. Is that?
Patty, is this happening like with any kind of pattern?
I see it happen at least once or twice a day at the, at the town parking lot.
I was just wondering, like, if there's someone who always comes at 6 o'clock, then, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, right now, because they're doing all that construction and there is no place to go to the bathroom when they all leave the construction area, that's their potty area.
Okay. So knowing that might help, she, yes or no?
Well, yes, but I haven't seen, this is my first time hearing about it. And they've been doing construction for three weeks.
Right. I'm just saying, going forward, you might be able to kind of have someone go by around.
Yes, but we need to know about it when it's happening.
Chief, give me your personal phone number. I will call you every time I see it, darling.
That's why they have 911 and a non-emergency number for you to call, just in case I'm not available.
Okay, are there any other comments or this evening? Anybody have anything else they want to add?
I've used up all my minutes.
Hello. Hi, it's Monica from Marlboro Town HOA.
Hello, Monica.
How are you?
Fine.
The two new commissioners, very pleased to see you all, you three ladies, thank you. The two new commissioners, very pleased to see you all, you three ladies, thank you. Just want to just give an update to Chief first, that the issues that we had previously with the package thefts, since the, we let you know, first of all, we let you know what was going on and you acted on it. We have not had any issues that the community is aware of because now, again, we're working with law enforcement. You're working with the different delivery companies that come through. You do patrol the area. So we've had, I think, just that one incident that we reported to you. And since we reported to you and the, the police first came out and began to patrol the area, we haven't had any additional issues. I just want to up, to update you on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Anyone else with comments? Hearing none, I will now close this meeting and call this meeting closed at 8:32. Thank you all for coming out. And if you have any questions, you know, most everybody knows my phone number. If not, call the town hall, they'll give it to you. And just give me a call or call the town hall. Kyle is always willing to listen. Okay, so good evening, everyone.
I've given Kyle a Google Voice number so that you can contact me that way too. And he'll give you that if you want to talk to me.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.